I'd like to call this meeting to order. First, I'd like to announce that this meeting is being recorded and ask if there's anyone in the audience who is also recording this meeting. Hearing none, if we could rise to the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item we have is, excuse me, public comment, and we have Chief Coleman.
Good evening, thank you. I just wanted to make the board and the public aware that the Fire Rescue Department will be hosting our annual Citizens' Fire Academy starting on Wednesday, October 23rd. This will be the third year that we've run this program, and it has been extremely successful over the past two years. We've gotten very good reviews out of this program. So I would like to encourage any citizens or business owners that are out there that would like to be part of the academy. They can visit our website at auburnmassfire.org. They can click on the Citizens' Fire Academy link at the top of the page, and they can download the application. Again, it starts on Wednesday, October 23rd. It'll be an eight-week program. The entire program is run out of our training facility at the West Street Fire Station. And again, I would encourage any elected or appointed officials to attend. The goal of the program is to really give all involved a little insight as to the inner workings of the Fire Rescue Department, a little peek behind the curtain, if you will. So like I said, if anybody has any questions, they can reach me at the fire station at (832) 7800, or again, visit the website for any further details. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
Our next hearings are advertised for 7:05. Is it 7:05? Okay, we have a couple minutes here on that. I think because it's an advertised hearing, I don't need to wait for the hearing. I've just been approached by Attorney O'Brien, who represents Mr. Bishai, and this is Agenda Item 4B. The Gold Depot, alleged license violation, 809 Washington Street, and we have a 7:05 hearing. Attorney O'Brien has requested that that hearing has not been held, and he's just handed me the license of Mr. Bishai dated September 23rd, 2013, to the Board of Selectmen. I, Anthony Bishai, am relinquishing my junk license effective immediately. I would like to thank you for the opportunity to have a business in the town of Auburn, and it's signed Anthony Bishai. I did consult with the chief just for a moment regarding the holding of the items for the 60 days, and Chief, if you could just let us know the agreement you had with the attorney in regards to holding any items that have been taken in to date.
Yes, he's going to make photocopies of the items that were taken into his inventory today. And I also just want to let you know that I did go down there today to inspect the safe that we were alleging was not on the premises 10 days after the last hearing, when you had told him that he needed to obtain one. When I did go down there, the employee did show me a safe. However, he was not able to open it because he didn't have the combination, so regardless of what happened here tonight, I was going to be forwarding you people a memo sometime this week requesting that you hold a third hearing, and I would have been alleging another violation of his license, but obviously, that's not going to happen due to the fact that he's opted to relinquish that. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
So, is it 7:05?
Yes.
So what we'll do is I'll request a motion to open the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of opening the hearing?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. So, before us, we have a letter requesting that the, from the license holder, relinquishing his license, having that information. I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing with no action taken.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion, any questions for the chief, before we close the hearing? All those in favor of closing the hearing?
Aye.
Did you say today was the last day?
It's effective immediately.
So, 60 days from today. It has to be held somewhere? What, he operated today? Is that what you said?
He was operating today.
So, 60 days from today?
60 days from today.
And where is that going to be?
It'll be in agreement with the chief.
Yeah, I'm going to have to make contact with him.
All right, okay.
So I'll also entertain a motion to accept the license, the relinquishment of the license.
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Detective. Also, we have a 7:05 hearing for Mass Mobility Vans LLC for a Class II license, 113 Washington Street. Is there a motion to open the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. The hearing is open. Do we have a representative? If you could come up to the microphone, please, and just tell us a little bit about what you're requesting.
Good evening. My name is Joe Cummings, and my wife and I started Mass Mobility Vans, and we are interested in selling modified vehicles that are accessible for wheelchairs and scooters. And we would like to get our Class II license at 113 Washington Street. Most of these vehicles, I plan on having them already modified on the lot for sale, but I will allow and accept vehicles to be supplied to me to send, to actually get them modified, and then shipped back.
And these are used vehicles that you modify?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and I would like to be able to take trade-ins as well, modified and unmodified vehicles, and the unmodified vehicles, I plan to bring to the auction. I have no desire to sell vehicles that haven't been modified with lower floor conversion.
Okay. And are you the one who met with the DCG?
Yes, I am.
Okay, and you're familiar with the recommendations, the conditions that they've placed?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Would members have questions? Mr. Holstrom.
Good evening. Excuse me. Now, that 113 Washington Street, are you going to be occupying that whole building from the sketches we have here? Is that building all going to be used for your business?
If you're actually facing it from the street front, it would be the left-hand building.
It'd be the left-hand side building.
Yep.
Now, are you going to be actually doing any modifications in there? Do you plan to do any modifications, or are you going to be just bringing them in, maybe an oil change, or tire rotation, or something?
I have no desire to do oil changes, or tires, or brakes, or anything like that. I will be, you know, possibly servicing the conversion. I'd like to do that. Most of the conversions I sell will have a warranty, so I will have to do some warranty work. But really, no desire to do any oil changes or tire changes, and things like that.
Any other questions? The 10 parking spots you have, is that including employee parking?
It's, right now, it's set at 10. I'd like to have right around about five vehicles.
And how many employees will you have?
It's going to be my wife and I.
Okay.
To start, and there's...
Are there any further board questions? Is there any public question or comment? Did you have anything else before we close the hearing? Is there a motion to close the hearing?
Motion to close the hearing.
Second.
All those in favor of closing the hearing?
Aye.
Any opposed? The hearing is closed. Is there a motion regarding the application?
Motion to approve a license provided at all applicable requirements of the state, town, and any of its departments, boards, and commissions had been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all the conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void with the conditions recommended by the DCG.
Second. Any discussion? Mr. Simoni?
Under discussion. Can I address?
Yes.
I just want to, I just want to bring this up really quick, because this is happening. The conditions that are part of your license, no one other than this board can modify those conditions. No one can ask you to do anything that's not part of this license, and I just want to make sure that you understand that and you're clear.
I'm very clear.
Going forward, if anything on that license needs to be changed, it has to come back to this board.
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Anything else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Good luck with your new business.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
The next item is a 7:15 hearing, which I think we have a couple minutes. I'll entertain a motion to move up Board of Selectmen Item 6A1.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. So, enclosed, we have a letter from the treasurer-collector about the results of the bid for the $5,480,667 municipal purpose loan fiscal year '14 to finance various capital projects, purchase of equipment, and middle school projects. Mr. Holstrom.
I make a motion to approve the votes that we hereby determine, in accordance with General Law, Chapter 70B, that the amount of the cost of the Auburn Middle School project authorized by a vote of the town passed on May 7th, 2013, or not under Article 17, not being paid by the school facilities grant, is $23,743,922, and we hereby approve the issuance of notes and bonds in such amount under said general laws, Chapter 70B, and further voted to approve the sale of $5,480,667, 1.25% general obligation bond anticipation notes, of the notes, of the town dated September 30th, 2013, payable September 30th, 2014, at par and accrued interest, if any, plus a premium of $57,000, $57,601.81. Further voted that in connection with the marketing and sale of the notes, preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated September 11th, 2013, and a final official statement dated September 18th, 2013, each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer, be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted. Further voted that the town treasurer and the Board of Selectmen be hereby are authorized to accept, to deliver, to execute and deliver a significant event disclosure undertaken in compliance with SEC Rule 15C-12 in such form as may be approved by bond council to the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the notes for the benefit of the holders of the notes from time to time. Further voted that we authorize and direct the treasurer to establish post-issuance federal tax compliance procedures in such form as the treasurer and bond council deems sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place, to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax-exempt status of the notes. And finally, further voted that each member of the Board of Selectmen, the town clerk, and the town treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them, or any of them, to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes.
Thank you, Mr. Holstrom. Is there a second?
Second.
So, is there, are there questions or discussion? We have the town treasurer, and we have the assistant clerk with us, who needs to witness the board's signatures. Mr. Holstrom?
Yes. Under the motion that I just made, it's speaking of some of the policies and procedures that are in place, or to be revised as needed. Do you foresee any revisions coming forward with that?
No, I think specifically to this vote, there are requirements, spending requirements, on the amount of money that we go out and borrow. So, those are set, that's too early. We monitor that and make sure that we're in compliance, so we don't end up in a potential arbitrage issue. The IRS could come in if we do not spend down those notes and penalize us by way of paying. We're earning interest on the money that we're holding, so they want to see it spent on a time limit.
Through the chair, just to clarify, my understanding was, when I saw that, because we've already voted policies for finances for the town, and I didn't know if that was going to affect anything of that document.
Actually, as part of this bond anticipation note sale, we were, our rating was reviewed by Moody's. I'm happy to report that they have affirmed that AA3 rating. They've indicated some significant improvement in terms of our financial statements as a result of some of the policies that were voted by this board in the Finance Committee. They were implemented year one in our FY '13 budget, and they are, for a second year, part of the FY '14 budget. So, that was duly noted, is part of our rating. To us, that's a good sign, that's a positive movement, step in the right direction. So I think if we stay the course, it's only going to lead to some good news down the road.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? Just be with us for a couple minutes, we have some documents to sign. So we have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Back to the agenda. We have a 7:15 hearing for the proposed pole relocation at Washington Street, excuse me, Verizon New England Incorporated and Mass Electric National Grid. Enclosed is a petition by Verizon New England and National Grid for the following: Washington Street on the northeast sideline, relocate J.O. pole number 22 approximately 183 feet west of the center line of South Street. Is there a motion to open the hearing?
Motion to open the hearing.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Is there a representative here?
Verizon.
If you could come up to the microphone, please. Identify your...
Yeah.
Okay. Just identify yourself for the record, please.
My name is Thomas Blicharz. That would be B-L-I-C-H-A-R-Z.
Thank you.
So I'm here for Verizon to request that you approve the relocation of pole number 22. That's 15 feet to the east, northeast of its present location, and I believe the reason is for the cumbees, the gas station that's there, so they can reduce, enlarge their driveway. Is that correct?
Yes, S.O.U.C.Y. for National Grid. There is an order that we have that they're going to be, I guess, redoing the Cumberland Farms and moving that pole 15 feet. Right now, existing based on the plot plan that I have, it would be from the civil engineer, the driver would be really too close to the pole, especially the anchor for the guy. Cars might hit it, especially plow trucks, when they plow on that driveway, it might hit that pole. So it would be beneficial to move that pole 15 feet in that way. And then we're re-upgrading the transformer on that pole, too, as well, to help better serve Fuller Automotive and Enterprise Rental across the street. And that gives us a better angle by moving it to support that line going over Route 20 as well.
Mr. Simoni?
When is this going to happen? If it's approved?
Well, we're still in the process here. That's still up and running, the Cumberland Farms. Once we get this approval, and we can't schedule anything to that, then it'll go in through the scheduling process. I'm filling in for the original designer who had this, had a medical, an emergency that she had to attend to. But we won't even schedule this until we get the okay. Once the okay, then the customer can go ahead, but then we'd have to remove the pole line that's serving them now on private property and do this, and they'd have to set the pole as well, Verizon.
Verizon sets the pole in Auburn.
How long, how long does the whole thing take? How long does it take to do the relocation, and then take the old pole down?
Half a day's work.
Half a day. So there's really, I would imagine, no impact to the traffic over there? What is it, one truck? I'm just, just so people know.
Yeah. It shouldn't be too much, I think. I don't think they're going to be, I think they're going to be swinging the existing line. Once they set the pole, they should be able to swing it over to the new pole without requiring, you know, a new line, be strung across Route 20. That's not in the plans that I have, but because that pole, they can access it from the parking lot of Cumberland Farms, as long as they can swing that wire, and it looks like they could, then there should be really no problem with traffic.
So you don't anticipate having to block a lane or anything like that?
No, and even if the foreman says, once they set it, because when they set the poles, if there's a big boulder where we initially want it, they might have to move it a few feet. Then it's only going to be that one line, so it's not going to be a large tie-up, so...
All right, thanks.
Mr. Holstrom?
Through the chair. I was over there to look at that, and I'm not familiar, of course, with any of the wiring and installation of poles and guys and what have you, but just a movement of 15 feet, is that going to put any stress on any of the other poles in that area where you would have to do any other reconstructing at some other point down the road?
No, because usually when we set them, we set them right next to the line, so it will be in line with the existing pole line, it'll be straight, and there'll be no, you know, stress on any other poles. Actually, it'll make it even more in the middle between the spans, so over the long term, it would really help lessen the stress, and would lessen the stress for the line going over Route 22, Fuller Automotive.
Great, thank you.
Did you have something else?
Yep, just one last one. So, again, informational for the folks that might be over there, is, can they expect any interruption in service during the process, or...
The only, well, Cumberland Farms, of course, knows they're going to have that interruption, because what we're doing on that new pole, we're going to put a new transformer and then service both the new Cumberland Farms and Fuller Automotive in that building, which is Enterprise, Fuller, and I guess Speedy. Those are the only customers that are going to be interrupted, that's it.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And I'll just remind members that this project has gone through extensive site plan review by the planning board, as well as several meetings with the zoning board of appeals, and all issues have been addressed. Butters have been notified. Are there any butters here who wish to speak? Seeing none, is there a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of closing the hearing?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Is there a motion in regards to the request?
Make a motion that we approve the pole relocation as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you very much.
So we have no communications, and we're back to Board of Selectmen items. We did 6A1. We have 6A2. In your packet, you have a letter from the town clerk. As Chair of the Board of Selectmen, you are designated member of the John E. and Ethel E. Riley Outstanding Citizen Selection Committee. Please RSVP as to whether you will be attending or sending your designee. The Board of Selectmen also needs to appoint a member of the press who lives in Auburn to the selection committee. Please let me know whom the boy chooses, so I may notify them of the meeting. The meeting has been scheduled for Monday, October 28th, at 6:00 PM in the clerk's office. So, we have members of the press who live in Auburn. We have Ellie Olson from the Telegram and Gazette, and we have the new Auburn Mass Daily, which is an online newspaper, and we have two of those editors of that paper who also live in Auburn, Mr. Labonte and Mr. Anderson. So those are the three who would be available for appointment to this committee.
Have any of them been approached and showed an interest in being part of that?
I don't believe that they were aware that they would qualify for this, so, no. The simple answer is no.
I'm sure.
Yes.
Ellie Olson is, I know, has served for many years. I don't know if she'd like to continue, or whether she'd like, were there others also available, whether she'd want to step back and let someone else be appointed, or don't you care? Either way.
[inaudible].
I'd like to make a motion then to appoint Ellie Olson to...
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted.
Thank you, Ellie.
The next item we have is a transient vendor license. This item is going to be... This item is going to be held until our October 15 meeting. The applicant needed to meet with CBA and had a couple issues. So we're going to hold this until October 15. It's not a hearing, so we don't need a motion for that. Just for the record, I will have a motion to continue the matter till October 15.
Second.
So moved.
Penny did one of those silent ones. So there's a second, any question, any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed, so voted. We have gift acceptance from Hometown Bank in the amount of $500 for the Fall Festival. Is there a motion?
Motion to accept with gratitude.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. We have no proclamations. Just under Board of Selectmen items, we will be meeting on September 30, which is the fifth Monday. We have some, we definitely will have items to address, including the Fall Town meeting. So we will be meeting on the fifth Monday.
Just a point of order. Before the meeting tonight, I was presented a proclamation for an Eagle Scout Award. Should we be voting to have that?
But that was one we already approved. We just needed, we just needed the signatures.
Okay, thank you.
So we could get it for this. It's for the Court of Honor for this weekend.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we had no member items come in prior to the meeting. Are there any member items? All I'd like to say is we continue to have openings for the Zoning Board of Appeals. If any is interested, please put in your application. Any town manager items?
There was nothing on there through the chair, but I do want to make a comment just to thank the, first of all, the Recreation Director, Kristen Havas, and the Parks Department Cemetery Mission for all the work that they did for the Fall Festival. They put a lot of work into it. They started planning several months ago. And they worked hard with members of GTW and the Parks Department and all the volunteers from the town and the residents that participated. It was a nice, again, collaboration with the schools to combine it with homecoming, which is a nice thing. And every year, it just seems to be getting better. So I just want to make sure we thank everyone. They did a lot of work on it, and they did a great job.
Thank you. Anything else? We have no tabled items. Is there any public comment? If you could come up and give your name for the record.
My name is Vern Benowsky, 26 Golden Drive. My question is, what would be the process to place an article on the town warrant since the warrant is open, I believe, at this time?
The warrant is closed. It closed at 4:00 today.
It closed at 4:00 today. I guess that would make the point. A movement. Thank you.
Anything else? Mr. Simoni?
I wanted to, I was planning on mentioning this under public comment that Tom Manager brought up. I don't know how many people had a chance, but I went over for a couple hours on Saturday, and the Fall Festival was pretty well-received. I think I managed to talk to all but a couple of vendors who were really busy. And they all, they all were happy. They said, you know, it was a good crowd. They were doing pretty well. And the only thing I'm sorry I missed was I did not get to decorate one of the 100 or so pumpkins that Lundgren Honda donated. But other than that, I had a great time. So it was a very successful event.
Thank you, Mr. Simoni. Anything else? We have the minutes of February 11, 2013. Are there any corrections or omissions? Seeing none, the chair will accept them as written. Is there a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? Any opposed? We are adjourned.